Good evening. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for how you woke us up this morning and how you started us on our way with the Houston activists of our limbs. God, we thank you tonight for how you've been wonderful. God, we thank you for how you give us brand-new mercy each and every day. Now, God, we pray that as we begin to go into this city council meeting tonight, God, we invite your presence into this space. And God, we asking you for more wisdom, clarity, wisdom, and understanding as we begin to conduct our city business. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. We now call the meeting to order. I'd like to say good evening to everyone and welcome to the city council meeting of September the eighth. Thank everyone for joining us. And at this time, we have pledged allegiance led by Mayor Protem Tyree.
I will pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Plur, we have the roll call, please. Here.
Mayor Protem Tyree.
Present.
Councilmember Pitt. Councilmember Horton.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges. All are present.
All right, great. At this time, we need a motion to approve the minutes of August fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I made the motion to approve the minutes from August the fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Okay, motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All in favor. Need a motion to approve the agenda as is or with any necessary amendments?
I made the motion to approve the agenda as is.
Okay, would like to add one, one item. Mr. Radar is here to do a presentation on this Eagle Scout presentation.
Mr. Mayor, also, we need to make an adjustment on the planning board alternate member appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to?
Second.
With the necessary amendments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Radar, if you come forward to do your Eagle Scout presentation, sir, state your name and your address and Mr. Chris, to my right, will operate the laptop to display your presentation.
Oh.
There you go.
Hey, testing.
You got it, you got it.
My name is Tudorulinski Raider. I'm, live on five oh four North Road, Washington, North Carolina. And my presentation would be on my Eagle Scout project, which why I will be building a picnic table at the Washington Sports Complex. So a little bit about myself, well, I already mentioned I live in Washington, N.C. I'm seventeen. I'm a student on Beaufort County Early College High School in my senior year, and I'm also enrolled in Certified Nursing Assistant Program at Pitt Community College. I've been in Boy Scouts since I was seven years old when I was in Cub Scouts and then crossed over to Boy Scouts path at eleven years old. So the content of my Eagle Scout project, the proposed project is to build a picnic table on one two five Airport Road, Washington, N.C. This picnic table will pretty much be a, it will serve a recreational purpose for soccer games because it will be located like right at soccer games. And it will be a place where people can have their lunches, parents can watch their kids play soccer, and just an overall serve as a tribute and a memory to show that scouts are ready and available for community engagement and to show presence. So my project location, so there's a More Aquatic Center, I have the GPS map pulled up. And the soccer field, I have it labeled, and the picnic table is that little small square. It is going to be very close to the parking lot, but not too close because people like to take their truck beds and, you know, sit on their truck beds like right up front. It is to, on the map, to the right, it doesn't show in the GPS map, but that's where the More Aquatic Center will be to give you a general idea of where it's going to be at. These are the design blueprints. Note and warning is that there is no permit required. I've talked to Matt Soffer, the city inspector. He said I did not need it because it is an eight-by-eight and it is under $12,000 construction project. Here's my project budget, the materials of, of all the building materials and supplies that will consist of one thou, that will be $1,000, supplies will be 195, which would be like safety equipment, works, you know, working gloves, safety, safety glasses, food, water, tools. That'll be like, it'll be $57.86 and then other will be $1,355.51, which that, the other will be pretty much essentially fundraiser money, money for transporting equipment here and there, transporting scouts even, just all the above, that doesn't have to do with materials. And the total cost will be $2,608.56. These are the materials and supplies needed. I have lumbers set up and I went to Lowe's and pretty much got price quotes of everything that include my budget, but that's going to be everything I'll need. My fundraising opportunities, what you see right there, that is of my flyer I set up. So I'll be setting up a barbecue fundraiser for Boy Scouts. It will, it will be like partnership of Boy Scouts. And that will be one of the ways I'll be raising money. I'll also be using donations from other sources such as Agape Health Services, City of Washington, and you can see $500 would be the estimated amount, my goal amount for fundraising. So these are the project timeline stages. First is planning, which is Boy Scouts Board of Review. My Eagle Scout project has been approved by Boy Scouts of, by Scouting America. The city council meeting, which is here, fundraising, fundraising event, which is my barbecue Boy Scouts fundraising event will be September twenty-seventh. I'll be also meeting with the CEO of Agape Health Services, Dr. Michael McDuffie, which I do not have a date, so it is to be determined. Smoke and Water Event, I'll also be raising some money from Smoke and Water Event, which will take place October seventeenth to eighteenth. And next stage will be debriefing on safety and plan on how is the project going to be, on how the materials will be transported, who's going to be doing what, assigning roles. That it will be September eighteenth, it's just going to be between me and the Boy Scouts and my troop. Materials and supplies, the week of September fifteenth, I would just be, you know, going to the store and, or Lowe's or Harbor or Build It For Source, and I would just be gathering all the, I'll be buying everything. And then project implementation is when the construction process will officially start, September twenty-second. And my project deadline, where I'll be finished everything, construction, paperwork, everything will be December nineteenth. And that is pretty much everything. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Yes, sir. Sound like a great project, and we wish you luck with it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, comments from council? Okay, thank you, sir. Keep us informed.
All right, I will. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, section one, need to approve the item in the consent agenda. Authorizing police and fire service to apply for a Walmart grant. Good motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council authorize the police and fire service to apply for a Walmart grant.
Okay, motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All in favor. Do we have any comments from the public today, Mr. Russell?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Section three is public hearing zoning, none. Public hearing, economics incentive. We'll come back to that at six. We are now, we don't have any scheduled public appearance, so we're in correspondent and special reports. Item A.
Yes, sir. Item A is just POs in excess of $50,000. We have one item listed. It was a piece of equipment that was purchased for public works. And there are several budget transfers listed as well. Again, just administrative items to move some money around for a couple of different accounts as we move forward to start the new fiscal year.
Budgeted items. Budgeted items.
The budget, budgeted items? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Item B, sir?
Oh, item B, the budget transfers. There are several budget transfers listed. Again, just kind of adjusting some accounts. I think there were a couple of instances where there were some insurance premiums that were underestimated and some funds were transferred from that. But again, just an administrative accounting measure to keep all of our accounts in the black.
Okay, very good. Section seven, reports, board commissions, committees.
TDA, I think we're moving forward with that. We have our regularly scheduled meeting on the seventeenth and some more extensive training scheduled for the twenty-fourth to move that forward. I don't know if our Councilman Tyree has anything to add to that as far as the TDA. But again, we're moving forward with that currently. Airport Authority, there's a lot of things going on at the airport with our stormwater project wrapping up. Again, this was all funded through the legislative appropriation, but we have two or three weeks left of the stormwater project. The STEM building construction is underway. You may have noticed that on the corner of Airport Road and Market Street. And there are three hanger pads that they have started groundwork for that we will see three additional airplane hangars coming out of the ground relatively soon as well. So there's a lot of, lot of activity going on at the airport currently.
Very good. Hear me relation, hear me relation council, their report. Now, is this time?
Not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Washington Electric Advisory Board, Mr. Russell?
Currently, we did have a brief outage this past weekend. The staff, when you come in staff, on coming in in the middle of the night to get that, that back up and running. But again, as far as the Electric Advisory Board, things are moving along well. This past July, we had some debt service that went off through Electric Cities that lowered our power purchase price monthly, so we'll see some continued savings with that. It makes us a little more fluid from an operational standpoint.
Want to give an update of what happened early Saturday morning with the power outage?
Yeah, there was a mishap at the point-of-delivery substation, some type of animal or something. That's what it appeared to be, but again, crews were dispatched. It was a large-scale outage, again, coming into the point-of-delivery site. But again, they were, they were, the outage was sometime around 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Saturday morning.
All right, thank you. Other boards, commission, committees, are there any? Section eight apartments, that item has been removed for tonight. Section nine, we don't have any old business. Section ten, new business item, Mr. Russell?
All right. Under new business, this is basically seeking a letter of support for a NCDEQ merger, merger and regionalization feasibility study where we would look at countywide sewer. This is a grant that is being assisted through the Mideast, the local college agency that will be handling the application. But it's just grant funding to allow for the study to look at options for countywide sewer. It would create a regional plan to connect some of the municipalities within the community and extend sewer in some underserved areas currently. Again, this doesn't bind us in any way to provide anything, but it'll look at some options such as cost and technical feasibility and then something we can review in the future.
Do you know if the county is doing such study also?
Yes, they are joining with us, all of the communities in Beaufort County, as well as the county itself is joining this application. I believe the, the grant total is $400,000 that will provide for the engineering study. Again, it's, there's no match requirement, and this just looks at the financial feasibility and technical feasibility of providing countywide sewer to help with future development.
Okay, all right. What's council pleasure on item A?
Mr. Mayor, I move the city council approve the letter of support for the NCDEQ merger and regionalization feasibility study where Beaufort County would be the lead application on the grant application.
We have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Item B, sir?
Item B is a budget ordinance amendment for appropriating fund balance in funds zero three zero and zero three two to cover insurance premiums. Again, these both serve the water and sewer fund for these insurance premiums. And again, this is, we did notice, I believe there was a seventeen percent increase for insurance premiums this year in the new fiscal year, but this is just making an adjustment to ensure that those accounts stay in the positive.
Okay, it's council pleasure, item B.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt a budget ordinance amendment for appropriating fund balance in zero three two and zero three, no, zero three zero, I'm sorry, and zero three two for additional funds to cover insurance premiums.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. All in favor.
Item C is a budget ordinance amendment for the purchase of land at two twenty-four East Seventh Street. This is a property adjacent to the Bobby Andrews Center. It was discussed several months ago. Somewhat dilapidated. We've worked with the property owner. They were relocating outside of the community. This would allow site control at the location and expansion for our parking facilities at this, at the Bobby Andrews site. There's a lot of overflow parking and it's kind of, kind of cramped at times during basketball season and during other events there. And with the addition of the splash pad and some of the improvements that we've made in that park space, this will allow for expansion of our parking lot on Seventh Street.
Okay, all right. Council pleasure?
I move that the city council approve the budget for the purchase of land at two twenty-four East Seventh Street.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right, all in favor. Item D, sir?
Item D is to award the bid to Down East Preservation for renovations for the history center and museum. The winning bid was 202,460 dollars. We've generated quite a large amount of revenue from donations to move this project forward, and we're just kind of easing into it, but we've solicited bids from a number of general contractors. They came in much lower than we anticipated, but again, this would allow us to move forward with Down East Preservation to begin the improvement.
Okay, all right. Council pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move city council award the bid to Down East Preservation and approve the subsequent, as you were, the subsequent purchase orders for the renovations on the first floor of the train station depot.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, all in favor.
I would also like to point out on that, with that project, that's 100% funded through donations. There's no city contribution at this time, so there's been tremendous support for this project to move forward.
We greatly appreciate the support from the community to fund this project 100%. Thanks to everyone that's involved. We have twelve minutes before we can go into public hearing for economic incentives. So we can take a ten, twelve-minute break.